Eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four to order, and if you would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the isle with liberty and justice for all.
Sandy, could we have a roll call?
Councilmember Shippers.
Here.
Alabas, Ingalls.
Here.
King.
Here.
Mayor Felkins.
Here. And if we could have a motion to approve the agenda with the amendment, please.
I will make a motion to approve the agenda. To include an amendment to add, a recommendation regarding purchase of police vehicles under the city manager's report.
Support.
Councilmember Alabas, Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Mayor Felkins.
Yes. Motion carries. This time, we'll open the floor for our first public comment. We do ask if you come forward, if you would please state your name, and then also write down your address for the clerk. It would be very much appreciated.
I'll do it.
Okay. Hi, Bruce Loper. I wasn't here in town when the last time came up about short-term rentals, and so I thought I'd come in tonight. I heard it was going to be on the agenda again, so I wanted to come in and speak about it. And what I want to say is, I think we can all agree that we have a housing shortage in the Cadillac area, and we need more housing. And every time we take a house off the market to put it in short-term rental, that gives us one more problem, one less house for families to live in. In the meantime, we're going to build apartments and stuff, but that's a long-term project in order to get that done. And all of the people who want to build the apartments are all coming back and saying, well, we can't do it without government subsidies. We need government money in order to build these. Well, it seems to me, when we're doing that, the whole process is making the rich richer, period. Okay? We're allowing somebody to take an R1 house and find a way to double their income easily. Okay? And the only way we can seem to replace it anymore is to build something with a government subsidy, which again makes the wealthy wealthier. That's all I have.
Do you want me to put my address downstairs or here?
Here, please.
Okay, I'm Cindy Elms, and I'm representing my son-in-law and my daughter at thirteen-oh-five Sunnyside. Last year, all summer, was a disaster. And I brought in information, and I gave it to Marcus, and I gave it to John last week, because he's still advertising it on Airbnb for sleep sixteen people for ninety-nine dollars a night. And you know what kind of parties go on in there when there's sixteen people at ninety-nine dollars a night? Single-family house. And they park in front of our house, they walk on our, he's got his dock on the property line with steps going down to his dock, and they take the steps, do a right, and go on our seawall, and go on our dock. They don't even use his dock. So, and I'm planning on being there this summer, living, and I get so nervous when I talk to people, because I've been going through this downstate with solar and wind turbines, so. But, and I'm going to be there, living there this summer, hopefully, God willing. And I was told if people trespass, to call the cops, because I'm seventy-four years old, and I am not going to confront them renters like my son-in-law had to do last summer. And he confronted the owner of thirteen-oh-seven, which was not pretty. And I've got several talking points here, and I don't, I know you don't want me to, can I give them to you guys? Take one for him. And some pictures of the dock. This is, I've been doing this with this wind and solar downstate all since I left here last summer. Are you guys, that's the same thing.
It's the same thing, right?
Yeah, yeah.
You know what? Should we give this to Sandy?
I'll just keep one copy.
Okay. Thank you.
Because we bought the property in twenty-twenty-one, spring of twenty-twenty-one, and the dock was centered on thirteen-oh-seven, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two. Then it was sold late twenty-twenty-two, and the new owner put the dock on the property line, so they go right, like I said, downstairs, take a right on our dock, on our seawall. And I'm not, I'm not, I'll call the cops before I go out and say anything. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no one else, we'll close public comment, and we will move on to the approval of the consent agenda. And this evening, we do have the minutes from the regular meeting that was held on February twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Councilmember Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Alabas, Mayor Felkins.
Yes. Motion carries. And that takes us to several communications for this evening, Sandy.
Yes, it's being recommended to approve the closure of Hemlock Street between East River and North Park from two PM to six PM on March thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four, for an Easter egg hunt at Diggins Hill.
I'll make that motion to approve the closure of Hemlock Street between East River and North Park Street from two PM to six PM on March thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four, for an Easter egg hunt at Diggins Hill.
Support.
Councilmember King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Alabas, Ingalls.
Yes.
Mayor Felkins.
Yes, motion carries.
It's being recommended to approve the display of a banner from April eighth to the fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, for National Library Week.
I'll make a motion to approve the display of a banner from April eighth to fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, for National Library Week.
Support.
Councilmember Shippers.
Yes.
Alabas, Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Mayor Felkins.
Yes, motion carries.
It's being recommended to approve the display of a banner from April fifteenth through the twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four, for Earth Day.
I'll make a motion to approve the display of a banner from April fifteenth to the twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four, for Earth Day.
Support.
Councilmember Alabas, Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Mayor Felkins.
Yes, motion carries. Marcus.
Mayor, members of the City Council, good to see everybody again. Thank you for your time earlier this afternoon in our special work session. I do appreciate the time that everyone commits to the community and to this organization. The first item on the manager's report is an update regarding short-term rentals. There were several addresses that were shared with us with concerns about current ongoing activity, including the address that we just heard about off of Sunnyside, as well as another address off of Pine Street. And our city attorney, who's joining us virtually this evening, Laura Genovich, does have an update to share publicly with us. And Laura, if you wouldn't mind?
Yes, I'd be happy to. We did receive information about several properties, even though it's the off-season there. I'm going to go through each of them and provide counsel with an update. One was one sixteen East Bremmer. This is a property where there was a complaint about short-term rental usage. Our firm sent a demand letter to that property. The property owner then contacted city staff and spoke to staff and advised that they are renting, but it is longer than thirty days, and asked for confirmation that renting in excess of thirty days is permissible. And under Mr. Wallace's interpretation, which we agree with, interpreting the ordinance, renting in excess of thirty days is okay. That is not a short-term rental. So in the absence of some evidence that that is shorter term than that, we do not see further enforcement action at that time. Of course, we would remind those property owners that that needs to continue being in excess of thirty days, and if that circumstance changes, then enforcement action might be warranted. With respect to one twenty-eight East Pine Street, we did also send a letter upon receiving information that there may be short-term rental usage there. We did not receive a response to it, however, in looking at the information online, we do not see that property listed on Airbnb anymore. It does still appear on Expedia, and I'm not sure if that's an automatic listing from having it listed before. Again, the previous Airbnb link that we had last summer is no longer an active link. So we don't have much more information at this time, and certainly if residents in that area have concerns or evidence, we would recommend or request that they provide that information to the city. I believe there's still a complaint form on the city's website that can be used for that purpose, or certainly contact city staff with any photographic or other evidence related to that, so that we can review that. With respect to nine hundred Chestnut, we also received information of possible short-term rental activity there. Our firm did send a written demand letter. We did not receive a response. That one is also, there's a listing for it, but nothing can be booked. So for example, I try, I should say, it's not on Airbnb. It has an Expedia link, but when I try to book any number of dates over the coming year, you know, from next week to next month to several months down the road, all of them show as sold out. So sometimes I understand from other residents we've dealt with on this, sometimes when it's not an active short-term rental, they have an option to market as not available for rental, so that you might still see a listing and photos, but it's not actually available to book. And based on my efforts to do a, you know, pretend test purposes booking, that might be the case for this one, but we don't have any further information on that. So same, we would, you know, request that any residents or neighbors with concerns share that information with the city. Five thirteen East Cass Street also received information about possible short-term rental. We did send a demand letter, however, the U.S. Postal Service has indicated it is arriving late for the certified mail. We also sent it first class, and that has not bounced back to us, so it's possible the first-class mail delivery was delivered. We have not received a response, and we do not have any link for this. We were never able to find a short-term rental link for this and do not have one to investigate. So again, if there is more information from residents or neighbors, we'd be very happy to review that. The property that was referenced during public comment, thirteen-oh-seven Sunnyside, is the subject of litigation, and that litigation is going to be discussed as indicated on the agenda in closed session today. So I'd like to provide my update to council during that closed session, if that's acceptable to council.
Thank you, Laura. And there might be questions from council members. One of the things that I want to also add is that we looked at our logs, both in the Police Department, as well as through community development, to see if there's been any complaints filed of, you know, things like trespass, or, you know, noise, or just other issues that that might happen, especially in light of the types of issues along those lines that were happening off of Sunnyside. And as of now, we don't have any of those types of complaints on file. It doesn't mean that there may not be activity occurring at those properties, but nothing has occurred where it's generated a call to the police or a call to zoning to say, hey, you know, there's another law party, or somebody throwing garbage, or doing something that that would raise the eyebrow. I don't know if Laura has anything further to add, or if council has questions, but certainly, you know, City Council, it's well within your purview if we want to escalate any of this to another level, similar to what we've done with the Sunnyside properties. There were two at one point that we had filed litigation against. That's always an option, so.
I still think that we have a devil in the detail in enforcement. I've talked to Marcus about several citizens have sent me information, one being the Pine Street, and I think, Laura, you got the pictures that I forwarded on, of what would definitely appear to be active weekend rental happening at that residence. And my concern is, I understand our legal is sending a letter, but when there are pictures of activity going on, I think we as a city have a duty to follow up on that investigation. And I think we need that clear-cut plan, that we can tell the people that are living around these sites that we are following up. And I'm very concerned about making them the police. I am, if they've told us the activity is going on, and there's, we've got pictures of it, and we see the activity, then I think it's on us to enforce that ordinance. And I think we need to take the pressure off that neighbor who is dealing and living with that. So I guess I want to see us have whether we need to develop a written policy through a work session or something, but I think we have to have an enforcement ladder. Okay, we've got legal, they can send a letter, but if this activity is occurring, you know, is it going to be community development following up with someone going over? Is it going to be the Police Department? Who isn't? It doesn't have to be confrontative, but I think it needs to have follow-up, to have an investigation, to confirm what's going on. And if something's going on, then we can act as a council to say we need to bump up the enforcement. Or my hope would be, is if it's confirmed, then automatically the enforcement would be kicked up by our legal.
So is the enforcement, are you asking, like, for there being, like, weekend guests there that aren't causing problems, that would get the neighbors to call the police about, to just go and knock on the door and tell people they have to leave or something?
They don't have to tell them they have to leave. They would just confirm, you know, confirm they're there on a short-term rental process. I don't blame the renters. I don't think anybody blames the renters. It's the owners that have to follow the law and have to know that it's not correct. But I think once the investigation confirms that there are short-term renters in there, that tells us, we can tell Laura, yes, push forward, because the owners are saying, huh, what are they going to do? Right now, there's no real follow-up to what are they going to do if we don't answer the letter and we just keep doing it. And the major sites aren't always the way these get rented. A lot of times, it's through word of mouth or their own network. So to say that we're just looking at the internet, I don't think is enough.
So after these letters are sent, I know we're going to get an update from someone who has not responded or something, and is still continuing. Isn't the process then to go through the attorney and to, and then move to litigation for that?
Why?
And it sounds like we're doing that, because we have one, two, three, four, five, six different.
Well, I think what we heard Laura saying, and I think that's the point that we're both talking about, that same point, is Laura saying, so if there's more information out there, give us more information. I'm saying that burden shouldn't be on, for example, on the Pine Street one, the citizens that gave me those pictures. It said, look, it's going on. They've already given that photographic evidence. Now I think that we have that, after they haven't responded to the letter, then I think it's our duty to have a plan of what part of staff is going to go out and confirm what's going on. And then I think that puts Laura in a position that she can push forward with the litigation.
And this, and you're talking about just, you know, standard procedure that we would follow, and then hold ourselves accountable for, or be able to correct. You know, and in the case of the nine hundred Chestnut Street, where, you know, nobody responded to us, and we're not sure the claim is unverified, that would be a decision tree where you might want to flag it for additional investigation, like you're talking about.
Exactly.
Like in Bremmer Street, when they answer the phone and explain themselves, the investigation is pretty short.
Yes.
So, you know, if we are, as we're discussing, talking about identifying time for staff to go out to do the investigation, which is likely something that would be occurring either after hours, on holidays, on weekends. It might be something that has to fall to the Police Department. I'm not saying it has to be a police officer, but that isn't necessarily something that they're trained in. Again, they can be trained to do the door knock to ask. Question becomes, you know, can we find some funds to bring on a part-time person, maybe during the summer especially, or during the months of higher activity, that would be willing to work on, you know, weekends and/or holidays to follow up? And the policy point that I'm trying to get at desperately for a City Council to really, you know, to really talk about is, you know, after council members might get from concerned neighbors pictures of, you know, cars and driveways, do you then, you know, this, we're talking about then having a city official doing a door knock, saying, hey, you know, I'm so-and-so with the city, can I ask you, you know, under what terms you're here? I'm not trying to make any kind of biased opinion in me saying that. I'm just saying that it could be as simple as any one of you, including Brian, you know, getting somebody popping off, you know, people playing in the yard, or cars on a driveway, or you picture what the activity is, knowing from the person that sends it that, hey, these aren't the people that I know own the house, doesn't necessarily mean that the people there are short-term renters. They very well could be, but then we send out an official to find out. And I'm not aware of a lot of towns that do that. I'm not saying that there aren't towns that do that. I, you know, it's something that I'd be curious about, just for fun facts, you know, as to how other places might handle the issue. But I just want you guys to all have eyes wide open. If we were to send somebody to your property, you know, you might be happy by that, thinking, okay, you know, people are looking out, people are taking notice of what's happening in my home, holding me accountable for it. On the other hand, you might also get upset, too.
Well, I think, though, we have an ordinance for short-term rentals. When we have an ordinance, we have a duty to enforce that ordinance. When you have a duty to enforce that ordinance, then you have to set up a process and a budget to do it. That, I think we do need to consider in our budget, setting aside some money, whether it's for training or to have the person go out, because I think that's the only way we have legitimacy, in having the ordinance and saying, this is what the process is.
Well, I would just say that, you know, last spring, early summer, we did have some discussion about, you know, if our expectation is that this is going to happen, then we as a council need to also be willing to approve the resources for that person to be put in place, whatever that role is, and this is a role. We have to support that role with resources from our budget to follow through with what that process is defined to look like.
Absolutely, and I agree with that.
And I don't think it'll be too difficult for us to come up with a number that can be part of that.
Okay. And we're in budgeting season, so that'd be great.
It's perfect timing. It's so nice.
Yeah. Yep. And truly, when we talk about, you know, enforcement, we've talked about other things with blight and, you know, so I would ask you to take all of that into consideration when you think about this person and that extra resource to help out where we need help. And just have one conversation, excuse me.
Do you need more water?
No, I have coffee. Thank you.
Sounds good. Laura, did you have anything you wanted to add, based on the conversation?
No, no, I don't have anything else to add on that.
And we'll be talking about the other one in closed session.
Good. Great, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Jeff, are you here?
Yes.
We have a special presentation this evening by our Utilities Director, Jeff Dealan, regarding the Local Development Finance Authority. And the Local Development Finance Authority was established many moons ago to provide the structure necessary to do groundwater cleanup in the area surrounding the old well field off of Eighth and Tenth Streets?
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
I keep wanting to say Sixth Street, but it's...
Sixth Avenue, Eighth Street.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's around it.
Those are the numbers.
Yes, those are the numbers. Jeff, if you wouldn't mind getting into it?
Mayor, council members, I have a short update on the LDFA, as Marcus said, on its operation. As you guys may know, it was established in early nineties to do a cleanup in the Cadillac area. We had some contamination, and it actually has been running quite well. In this, I'm going to do an LDFA budget, a low-budget operation update, purge-well operation, how they're doing in performance monitoring report. This is our current budget. If you can see, sixty percent of our current, and I got the actual numbers after this, sixty percent of our current budget is on utilities. That's electric. All right? Our next highest category would be contracted lab, where we're actually seeing how well we're doing out there. And then the third is actually salary infringes. So this is very energy, it uses a lot of energy here. So here, you can see our salaries, wages is twenty thousand a year, fringes are twelve thousand, but as you can see down here, our utilities cost is a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a year. Most of that, you know, ninety percent of that, would be electric. So that is a big, big user of electricity. Contracted lab, the next one, is forty-five thousand. That is, you know, mandated by the state and EPA to see how well we're doing in the cleanup of the water that we're pumping out. For some LDFA operations, right here is our volumes of water that we have treated through this. Since its inception, we have treated twenty-three point one, well, twenty-three point two billion gallons of water has gone through our LDFA. All right? So that's a lot of water. We pumped all the ground and cleaned up in that area. In the first year we ran it, we got forty-five, four thousand five hundred and eighty-one pounds of VOCs, volatile organic chemicals, out of the ground in nineteen ninety-seven. This current year that we just finished in two thousand and twenty-three, we've got a hundred and eleven pounds out of the ground. So if you look, if we go back a slide here, back to this one, that first full year we had, we got over two ton of contaminant out. And that last year, which is almost the exact same amount pumped, we got a hundred pounds out. So we're actually doing a lot of moving of the contaminants and removing them from the soil. Last year, twenty twenty-two, we had the average influent contaminant was nineteen point eight. Last year was eighteen point one. Early on, we'd see these massive drops every year, but now that we're getting to almost clean water, it's getting less and less and less. The VOCs concentration in our discharge, the stuff going out to the Clam River, we have not had one that has violated, except with the startup in ninety-six. We had one time that we had, when we first started up, but since that time, we haven't had any. But since that time, we haven't had any. And this is a influent concentration. You can see way back when we had the six fifty, six sixty was the influent concentration, parts per billion. So we're talking, you know, small amounts, and then down here, we're at the eighteen point one, I think was last year's. So and then yearly removal of VOCs, this is how many pounds we're removing. I've only got from two thousand and three. I didn't go back to ninety-seven, the graph gets a little crowded. But as you can see, that was about two thousand pounds removed in this last year. Like I said, that twenty twenty-three was a hundred and eleven pounds. So this is our old, this is our old SVE, Soil Vapor Extraction System. We had this system over by Kaiser or Borg Warner in their backyard. I just have this as a reference picture. We closed that system down in two thousand and ten because it completed its mission. And in two thousand sixteen, we got the finer closure for that part of the cleanup. So as you can see, even though we had the numbers in two thousand and ten to close it down, and we did close it down, it took the EPA about six years to get to the point where they said, yep, you're good. Otherwise, we just left the equipment in the ground, and in two thousand sixteen, we removed that equipment from that site. So that was part that was closed down. Quarterly, we do monitoring well samples quarterly. We do chrome wells, we do VOCs. And then annually, we do chromium and VOCs at all those other wells, the seventeen shallows, the eleven intermediates, purge wells. So that's how we monitor the system. Yes, Marcus?
Do you know, just for the benefit of full context for the public and for the city council, how many wells are out there?
Uh, we have eleven deep wells and seven shallow, something like that. And then there's a multitude of purge wells and monitoring wells out there. We have more wells. It's like Swiss cheese out there. We have a lot of holes out there in the ground to monitor this, so. As you can see, these are all our active wells that we're using to actually take water out of the ground. We have all the way from behind Saint Anne School to right at the DPW garage. And we go out from Four Winds here to the Old City Well Field. So that's the area that we're actually cleaning up. We're pumping in, like I said, I think we pumped in last year about eight hundred million gallons, so. One of the things we're going to have to do in the near future is the special assessment renewal. This was all by special assessment. Uh, we haven't had a special assessment in ten years probably on this property. And so we're going to have to start talking about that. And then the final closeout of the Northern Plating Inc. As we did the SVE site, the Northern Plating Inc. is another site that we can close out. The EPA is looking at it. It's a site that actually we had our chrome in because we had both chrome and we had the volatile organic contaminants. And so this is our chrome site in the, in fact, I got a meeting on a Zoom call on Wednesday to talk about this site and closing it down. So hopefully that site will be closed out in the near future.
I also think it's important, just to interject for for reference purposes, city council at the end of calendar year twenty twenty-three extended the special assessment by another couple of years. And as noted back then, it was just simply an extension of the special assessment area. It did not put in place an actual assessment. As our director had mentioned, we have not been collecting a special assessment fee for a number of years. It may it may be ten, it might be a little less. But but nevertheless, the reason why is because there's been enough proceeds that were previously collected to continue with the maintenance and operations of the LDFA. That being said, we do need to put a special assessment back in. It's our very limited understanding until we get clarified information back from from higher levels of government. But it is our understanding that since there is so much positive activity that's happened over the duration of this thing, that the amount of the special assessment will be perhaps the same, if not less, than what it once was the last time it was in place. But until we understand what the time period is going to be, it's going to be difficult to really nail that nail that number down.
I think the next slide would actually go right to that. We did a performance monitoring report where we went out, we hired a contractor, how well are we doing? They did their calculations. And their estimate is in twenty twenty-six, we'll be able to shut down our shallow wells. All right, we have shallow wells and intermediate wells. We have seven shallow wells and eleven intermediate wells. The original estimate was in twenty twenty-five, when the system was started up. Our last, like I said, our last one was twenty twenty-six. When we do that, since energy is our biggest cost, we're going to be shutting down about, you know, you know, half of our wells. We still have the plant, so I could see the cost going down by a a third because the plant takes up a lot of energy and then the the wells make up the rest. So I could see that shallow wells closing down, lowering our utility costs by about a third, which then obviously would translate into a lower special assessment that you need to run it because you don't have the the cost. Uh, the intermediate wells, originally it was estimated on the intermediate wells twenty sixty that we would be closing those down. In that same report, they projected twenty forty-four. So we are moving ahead a lot quicker on that, so this system should be running to the year twenty forty-four. And so some of the stuff we can do, we're looking at optimizing right now. We have two towers that are operating at all the ti- all the time. Since we're bringing in such little amount of contaminant, we are really looking at going to one tower only. That would save us money. Uh, next year or two years from now, when twenty twenty-six comes around, we'll be able to shut off wells. They'll help us out. One of the things we're looking at, if we don't shut down a tower, is maybe switching them and only running. We actually go to the small tower first, and then we go to the large tower. I don't know why it was designed that. But we'll change the plumbing, so we go to the large tower first and then shut down the small tower, hopefully. All this needs approval by the EPA and the MDEQ. Well, this, you can see, this is an older slide, Eagle, so. Yeah, uh, this is our LDFA old assessment. This was when it was first originally enacted. Prior assessments was ninety-six, ninety-seven, two thousand two and two thousand seven. The proposed, it was always a five-year assessment. And then we had a two-tier system. Tier one property that was owned at one time by the potential responsible party paid basically ten times what the tier two people paid. Back in those days, it was two thousand four hundred dollars per acre for the responsible party tier one. And it was two thousand six hundred and one dollars for the tier two parcels. The green ones here were the tier ones. Uh, the tan ones were the tier two. So you can see there's a lot of people in the area that did not contribute, but they just are in that area. And they had to, they paid one-third of the cost of the cleanup, and two-thirds was borne by the people in the green.
You you had mentioned ten times, though, that twenty-four hundred to twenty-one hundred is that?
No, two hundred.
Oh.
Two thousand four hundred and one or eight to six, two hundred and sixty-one. I might have stumbled over my words.
The.
About ten times.
There's going to be, is the public meet informational meeting date set yet?
It will be, we're having a meeting in, oh, like, three weeks, so we'll be sending out the information on that.
So as a part of regular process, the board is meeting in a few weeks. It's a public meeting, obviously, and as a part of that meeting, they'll be going over the latest data that we have, as well as hosting what's legally required to be, is called a public information meeting. That'll include another overview, similar to what our director's given, you know, given us tonight. You know, we've been talking about, the board has been talking about, for the last few years, about the process to start moving forward with with conversations to all of the industries that were once part of the special assessment area. Because while the industries are still here, reality is that ownership in some instances have changed more than more than once. And personnel has certainly changed. And so the construct of the the authority itself has Chamber of Commerce on it, has obviously the city on it. We have some industry leaders that are on it. But it's going to be, you know, dare I call it a heavy lift, it's going to require everyone to work together to make sure that that especially those that have never had to deal with this before, get a full education as to what this is, why we're doing it, and understand sort of the clock that's out there in terms of, you know, when it might be, when it might be over. You know, as the director mentioned, twenty forty-four is is the long haul date. You know, that that doesn't necessarily equate to there having to be a special assessment in place that entire time, similar to what, you know, we found here where there wasn't one in place for the last decade. I think it's going to depend on what what the costs are going to look like.
We'll we'll just have to make sure by the time we're in the, you know, twenty thirties, twenty, early twenty forties, that we have enough for closeout. Because all those wells will have to be pulled, you know, and stuff, grouted, filled, all that. So that's our big cost will be in the closeout, but there's, you know, years before we have to worry about that. Because even though we'll shut down the shallow wells, we won't pull the, we'll pull everything at one time because you never know if something happens and they say, hey, turn on the shallow wells again. You know, we were getting a detection of this, you know, whatever compound. So we won't pull the shallow wells, we'll mothball those, but we'll be looking at twenty forty-four if if the timeline holds out, that we'll be pulling all the wells.
The other thing to to I think that would be important to share is that one of the, one of the interesting asks, which is all it's been at this point, was to have the authority look at other substances other than what the authority was established to to clean up. And, you know, we have basically, you know, said, no, we're going to continue.
Politely declined.
Yeah, politely work on, you know, the the framework that this entire program was developed for versus branching out into other areas. You know, if that that could frankly completely gum up the whole process and result in a whole different intent, which is not not something that we're looking at, so.
And and Jeff, this is a question. My understanding is the requirements that we have with the LDFA are established because basically a settlement agreement between the feds, the state, and industry develop this authority, correct?
Correct. It would it would have been a super fund site if not.
Exactly.
And we were one of the, I think, maybe the first in the nation, don't quote me on that, but I think we were early on one that the community decided to take care of it, rather than let it go through the legal system and take years and years and years to decide who's going to pay for it. Our industries, our leaders back then, our people decided, we'll just do it ourselves.
And and I think that's something important for everyone to know is that our industry and our community and our city said, let's take responsibility and do this. And we were able to come to the screaming to do it.
Correct.
And also, it's not, the general public's not paying for it. It's the industry paying it through the special assessment and different federal funds. And we're mandated how much we can spend on operations, and we're also mandated on how much we have to reserve to close everything out.
Correct.
So we're regulated to make sure there's enough money to close it out, so everything's good and clean, and we're mandated to what it takes to operate.
Though though the operation is obviously fluid with the costs out there. I mean, it's not a set amount and so.
But I I I think that there was a point just made that really needs to get sharpened, and that is the operational cost for this program, for operating the cleanup of this entire area does not receive funding from what folks pay for water and sewer services. This is completely autonomous from that, and it operates as its own, basically, think of it like its own separate business.
Yep.
What did the state, was it Eagle, what did they ask us to test for that we said we weren't going to test for? What were they asking?
Well, P Phos was, P Phos was one. Uh, the other one was MTBE was a big one that was working its way towards the contaminant. And they wanted to know if that was the one they wanted us really to look at, if we could treat it there or not. And since none of our industries had used MTBE, obviously, we said we'd rather not start cleaning it and then have to clean it for years and years and years and have industries that never use that be paying for the cleanup of something that they never used, so.
And as, you know, just going back in history, the whole establishment of this whole, you know, this whole program was for specific, you know, specific.
TCE.
Yeah, TCE, exactly. And so if there needs to be something else done in some other way, in some other form, then certainly, you know, we'd have to look at that, but not trying to muddy the waters with this.
Do you know the the background of where they where they think the MTBE is coming from?
The which one?
The MTBE, like you said, they thought the plume was coming this way, but it's not from the city's industrial park?
I think they're thinking it's coming from like Mitchell Street area, outside the area and floating that way. I know they were defining the plume, but they never did definitively get to a source, so.
Jeff, how many gallons of clean water get pumped into the clam every day because of this project?
About two to two and a half, depends how many wells we have running, because obviously we have some.
Two to two and a half million gallons.
Two to two and a half million gallons a day.
Of clean water.
Of clean water. The water, we pumped all the ground, ran through the cleaning process, and then we're putting back into the environment.
Helps the trout?
Yes, actually, it's a funny thing. The trout are now living all the way up to the discharge of the LDFA. Even though it's not a trout stream up there, they are living all the way up to there, so.
Because of the temperature of the water.
Because of the temperature of the water, forty degrees.
Keep it going.
No, no.
The last question I have is because I think industry's been fabulous since beginning, is making sure that we really, really grind out on the numbers if there's got to be the initiated special assessment, so they're not getting a an out-of-the-blue hit. And if we're going to two thousand forty-four, I'm thinking it's something we might be able to adjust.
Well, especially with the seven, with the wells being closed down, I think that's a, that is going to be our biggest savings is when those shallow wells are being able to be mothballed and we don't have to run those. And then certainly at that time, we'll be able to go down to one tower only cleaning, and that'll be a savings also. So I mean, there's there's potential savings, you know, within three years, you know, two, three years here. We 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 just have to get to that point. And then with that, the special assessment should be less for everybody.
And maybe I missed the timeline for the special assessment. You said we need to start preparing, but is that like three or four years out, or is that?
I'd say within the next two years, we should do it.
Okay, okay.
Something like, or, you know, at least initiate the conversations.
And just for clarification, you've already met with the Industrial Fund Group and
Marcus and I met with the group.
You've done this whole presentation to them, yeah.
Uh, any other questions? I'd be happy to answer. All right, well, then I'll let the meeting proceed. Thanks, guys.
Okay. Mayor and members of the city council, the next item under the manager's report is a recommendation regarding approval of an agreement for a certified grant administrator. This is a required position to administer the Community Development Block Grant that the city was successful in obtaining for the purposes of essentially doing, I hate to call it phase two, but a whole phase two to the Market of Cadillac Commons. Just for a quick background context, some of the biggest items as a part of phase two are going to be permanent bathroom facilities, not just for folks of the market to be able to use, but certainly those that are going to be experiencing the the amenities that we have on the east side of Lake Street. Additionally, it'll include an overhead mechanical door system that we're really excited about looking at, a new sound system, the ability for folks to plug in electric cars as well. I don't know the number of spaces that we'll be looking at doing that in, but I believe the plan calls for somewhere between one to three in that sort of order of magnitude. So there's really going to be a neat amount of new activity at that site. It's also really important, I think, for everybody, especially out in the public to know, I know council probably served me say this before, that the, you know, the source of the grants that we're using for this project were specifically identified by the government as a grant for pre-existing, you know, by the government, uh, as a grant for pre-existing, you know, public gathering space facilities. It's, these are not dollars that otherwise could be used to improve other infrastructure like road infrastructure, or sidewalks, or lighting, or other such things that, that we also certainly need to pay attention to. But this was a specific grant source, uh, that could only be used on, um, uh, pre-existing facilities that could use, um, you know, some, some new, some new amenities, uh, to, to, to really frankly update them, uh, which is, which is great, especially since the, uh, the, uh, the, the screen system that we had was, was non-functional, or is non-functional at this point. Uh, so, uh, we went out for bid, um, and you can see in the packet, uh, three bids came in, the recommendation is to go with, uh, Hager Consulting LLC out of Fremont, Michigan, in the amount of twenty-four thousand, um, uh, one hundred and fifty dollars. Also important to note is that, uh, the state compensates for all of these costs above and beyond, uh, the grant dollars, which is, uh, a, a really neat, uh, part of this whole thing as well. So, um, any questions? Certainly happy to, to help.
Someone like to entertain a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion to award the contract for a certified grant administrator to Hager Consulting LLC in accordance with their bid.
Support.
Councilmember Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Alabas? Mayor Falcons?
Yes, motion carries.
Uh, thank you, uh, mayor and members of the city council. So, happy spring, and here we are asking to buy road salt, and of course, the weather is actually cooperating, because I don't think many people are, are thinking of, uh, today as a nice, uh, a nice spring day. And, uh, as we have, uh, done over the last several years, we're looking at participating in the state's My Deal program, um, uh, to acquire the road salt. We are estimating that we're going to, uh, purchase, um, uh, eight hundred tons, uh, which, uh, should be approximately seventy-five dollars a ton, or sixty thousand dollars. Uh, if there are questions, certainly throw them out at us, otherwise I'd request a motion accordingly.
I'll make a, uh, motion to authorize the city to participate in the My Deal competitive bidding process, and approve the commitment to purchase up to eight hundred tons of seasonal road salt through the resulting state of Michigan contract at the unit cost bid approved by the state of Michigan.
Support.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Alabas? Ingles?
Yes.
Mayor Falcons?
Yes, motion carries.
Uh, the next item is a, a utility-related item regarding our Class A bio solids and bids for injection. We only had one bid come in. Uh, we have approximately one and a half to two million gallons of Class A bio solids each year that we make, uh, and at one point five million gallons of bio solids applied per year, the cost would be approximately ninety-three thousand dollars. Uh, it is recommended that the contract for this injection from the date, um, of the award through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six be awarded to the Michigan Agro Business Solutions, uh, in accordance- No?
We had a corrected version that came out, it's on the table.
Okay, I don't have that. Or if I do, it's underneath my stuff, so why don't you take it over?
Everything is the same except for the contractor.
Ah, sorry.
And the line is correct, which should be Biotech Agronomics, sorry about that.
Yeah, number's the same, though?
Yes, everything is.
Okay, thank you, I didn't notice it. Put my computer right on top of the paperwork.
Okay.
Um, okay, I'll try to do this. I will request, um, let's see, I'll make a motion to award the contract for bio solids injection from the date of the award through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six to Biotech Agronomics, Inc., in accordance with their bid.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Alabas? Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Falcons?
Yes, motion carries.
So, um, the, not that this one could possibly be any more clunky than the last one, and I apologize, I didn't notice the updated paperwork, uh, but this, uh, request has to, has to deal with, again, another utility reitem, uh, the plasma mass spectrometer, which Jeff is still here to talk, uh, to talk about ad nauseam if we need him to. Uh, this, this request does request that we first have a waiver of competitive bidding to continue to use, um, how do you pronounce the name, gentlemen?
Agilent.
Agilent, thank you. Agilent Technologies, um, uh, the request, uh, is to award ten thousand seventeen to purchase their Cross Lab Silver Service Plan. Uh, it includes both ongoing maintenance, which is expected to be nearly four thousand dollars plus labor in the next year, uh, and they obviously use the, uh, or service the equipment that we currently have, which is why we're looking at the waiver. Is there anything, Jeff, or Owen, that you wanna add to that? What does the mass spectrometer do?
It, uh, measures the metals that we have in our water and wastewater. We use it for water and wastewater both. And, uh, this replaced our old, uh, AA atomic absorption machine, and it's just a different, uh, machine that, uh, measures those, uh, metals, so.
Okay, so we first have to waive competitive bidding?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to waive competitive bidding for the service agreement as described.
Support.
Councilmember Alabas? Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Falcons?
Yes, motion carries. And now I will make a motion to approve the service agreement with Agilent Technologies in accordance with their proposal.
Support.
Councilmember Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Alabas? Mayor Falcons?
Yes, motion carries.
Okay, uh, the next item, uh, mayor and members of the city council, is the item that was added this evening. This is a recommendation regarding the purchase of police vehicles. Um, as, um, we talked about briefly in our work session, uh, earlier this evening, uh, we have two vehicles that are, uh, budgeted currently in this fiscal year, a third vehicle budgeted in the next fiscal year, uh, and it is incredibly difficult to acquire these special cars. In fact, um, it is about a, could be up to about a twenty-month, uh, lead time to get the vehicles, and our fleet is getting older by the day. Uh, the recommendation this evening, after we were successful, uh, frankly, uh, just as of last week, in identifying a My Deal dealer, so again, someone that's part of the state bidding, uh, list, um, the recommendation this evening is to actually move forward, uh, with acquiring three vehicles at once, because this My Deal dealer has three vehicles that meet our specifications accordingly. Um, and, uh, they're frankly ready to be, ready to be shipped. And so, what we would do, uh, ultimately is, is amend the budget accordingly, uh, to relocate, uh, the third vehicle into this fiscal year and make this, make this purchase, um, uh, as it's being recommended. Uh, and so, the action, uh, is to, um, waive, uh, excuse me, um, ha- have competitive bidding be waived and have the purchase of the three Dodge Durango police vehicles be awarded to Grieve Chrysler Jeep Dodge Ram in Van Wirt, Ohio, uh, for the amount, uh, total amount of one forty, two forty-one. Uh, and as I mentioned, additional appropriations, especially for the upfitting of those cars, will still have to be made, um, and have the budget amended accordingly, once we have those numbers.
May I clarify one item?
Yes, please.
The My Deal dealer was the sixteen-to-twenty month delivery dealer. So, this is not through My Deal, this was just through contacts in the industry that identified this particular dealer that had received a shipment, and for some reason, they weren't all earmarked for individual agencies, so.
Maybe because they're all, they're all the one color, maybe, different color?
Don't, don't know why, just that, yep.
Yeah, thank you.
They're not neon green, are they?
No, no. But nor are they black, they're, they're actually white, so.
Okay. I will first make a motion to waive competitive bidding regarding purchase of police vehicles.
Support.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Alabas? Ingles?
Yes.
Mayor Falcons?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, and now, I'll make a motion to award the purchase of three Dodge Durango police patrol vehicles, white, to Grieve Chrysler Jeep Dodge Ram in Van Wirt, Ohio, for a total amount of one hundred forty thousand, two hundred and forty-one dollars.
Support.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Alabas? Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Falcons?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, uh, mayor and members of the city council, and, you know, because we're on a roll with not a single item being as straightforward as-
Right.
As, as they could be, why should any of that change for the next item on the agenda? Uh, so, uh, uh, in, in short, we are looking at having city council, uh, schedule a public hearing. Uh, in long, uh, we have two choices. And so, I am gonna ask John just to give, uh, a, a, sort of a quick synopsis, but this is regarding, uh, a zoning, uh, recommendation, uh, that will, uh, basically, uh, uh, require, or I shouldn't say require, but it basically changes variations within the R-PUD designs, uh, a piece of the, the city code, I think it changes about eight words. It actually gives more authority to the planning commission. Uh, the recommendation from, from staff, uh, is to have the, um, uh, item move forward without there being any form of time provision, sunsetting provision, for, for a couple of concerns, and John could perhaps, um, uh, accentuate those, but one being that it could unintentionally create spot zoning, uh, as well as unintentionally create, um, uh, non-conforming lots for any projects that go in, and then the, the clock turns off. So, John, why don't you give a, just a, a quick synopsis of, of what this amendment to the zoning code is?
Good evening, mayor and members of council. Um, I tried to be as concise as I could in, uh, council communication, but essentially, uh, what triggered the need to even look at the R-PUD is that we did receive a, a concept drawing for a downtown housing development, uh, one which, um, certainly in the discussion with our housing group, uh, warranted, uh, strong considerations to, to how we could get more housing into the downtown. Our current residential planned unit development ordinance was written to be used throughout the city and not necessarily just in the downtown. As such, it was written in a way that was not designed directly for downtown. Uh, the ordinance already does provide for the planning commission to vary any of the design, uh, provisions, uh, in our residential planned unit development. Uh, that includes things like, uh, lot area, lot, uh, lot frontage, lot width, screening, open space and signs. The, uh, what it doesn't address, which kinda became apparent in looking at the housing proposal, was, uh, uh, minimum lot size. It requires a minimum of five acres, a five-acre development. Uh, the site of this housing development was a little over one acres, I think about one point two-five or two-seven, something like that.
Two-seven.
And, so, um, realizing that, um, we didn't want to cause unnecessary delays, uh, in this housing project, um, I thought it was good to just see how simply we could expand the wording, uh, to give the planning commission the ability to make adjustments, seeing that they already could, uh, make those adjustments on, uh, all the design, uh, provisions, and what they call in the ordinance is this section. We expanded it merely to say this division, which is the, the entire section that governs the residential planned unit development. That would allow them to deal with the, uh, site size, minimum site size, and it would allow them also to look at density. Um, so, um, the reason why there are two, uh, there was, uh, one member of the planning commission expressed concern, whether it was giving too much authority to the planning commission. Um, also, I think it was mentioned of, perhaps we would have, uh, the new zoning ordinance in place by the date that was recommended. Um, my, my recommendation is to go with the one without the time limitation, but, uh, I think if not that one, we should proceed with the, uh, other one, uh, just so that we would, uh, have the ability to do this project. Uh, I reviewed it, it looks, uh, consistent with what you expect of the density to be in a downtown environment. Uh, our downtown has a number of, uh, three-story buildings and a few four, four-story buildings. Uh, what they're proposing to do is a three-story project, similar to the condominiums that are, uh, across the street from the proposed site, so I didn't see it as out of character with the area, and would be a, a simple, uh, simple process to, uh, allow, um, things to move more swiftly. Uh, this, uh, the special land use, it also, uh, does require that, uh, it meet, uh, the sections, there's some design provisions in, uh, s- uh, section nine that we're amending, that requires that the, uh, project be consistent and, and not contribute to the lowering values of the surrounding area. The special use permit process also has, uh, a number of general standards, which also addresses such items as being consistent with development in the area, uh, being able to be prop- properly serviced with city utilities, and, uh, not being in conflict with adjacent development. So, the planning commission, uh, will still retain the right to, uh, say no in the event that any of those standards are violated in what's proposed and could, uh, reject the project if they so desired, so, I, I don't see there being, um, a real big issue in, in terms of, uh, any harmful effects that might come out of this amendment.
But, just to throw onto what you're saying, aside from this one particular project that we're aware of today, I mean, there could be additional projects in the downtown area that-
That's correct. We're, we're aware of some other people actively working on some housing projects. Uh, because we don't have a lot of large sites left in the downtown, um, I imagine that the proposals on these housing projects are gonna be somewhat tight on space. Um, I, and I think some of the ones that are being talked about could be reasonably done in the spaces that they're proposing, but again, it would, uh, reflect typical downtown densities and not necessarily densities that you find, uh, further outside the downtown.
I, I've been taking the time over the weekend to research this, this is, this is my own little quip. I, I hate getting these things last second and having to delve into them and then make the decision, but I was able to make some calls and, and look into the concerns at the planning commission. And my personal concern is what we've talked about in zoning in general, and that is, we have zoning for a reason, it's to give people and developers upfront what their requirements are, what's allowed, what's not allowed, and we run a slippery slope once we start letting them be loosely changed. Saying that, um, housing is an absolutely critical concern that we have. Um, and, and doing my research, I, I very much would only support the date-supported one because of what we're changing, but I wanna know if we can't, because I think here, here's my ill-stated point, um, the R-PUDs for downtown are very different than the whole area. I think if we change the whole thing, we affect the whole thing. I would like to see a downtown R-PUD ordinance, because then we can address these unique lots, and we're not affecting everything else around, and we're not affecting the zoning or the perception of people who own, and the people we man- affect in the areas that still have the land available to do them as we set. So, my question is, can we, uh, take the ordinance that has the November one deadline? And my understanding and the way I read the amendment is, the amendment would allow the planning commission to approve a change in side and density pursuant to requirements, and sunset that ordinance on December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-four, in that we say as council to, uh, Mr. Wallace and, and our staff, we want by December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four, a downtown R-PUD ordinance, uh, for the planning commission to be able to approve downtown developments. That way, we don't mess with the whole outlying area, we're addressing the need of what we need to do right now, and I, I am so concerned, when, when you say we have zoning and it's over a wide area, but the planning commissioner, anybody can change whatever requirements they want, there's really no target to zoning, which is what is, what the purpose of zoning is. So, I guess I would like for discussion if we could tonight consider doing, uh, the proposal that has- that has November 1 on it, but saying that that is open till December 31, 2024, where it would sunset, and that we would like to direct the city to have for us prior to December 31, 2024, an ordinance just for downtown R P U D that would address our property in the downtown area.
So, can I ask them?
Hmm?
So, couldn't we just, excuse me, approve this without the December 31, 2024, and just direct the city to bring to us an ordinance for downtown before that date? Or do you think that we need to have a hammer?
No, it's not a hammer, councilperson. It's because this amendment to the 31st would be, it would be the whole area, and we can't avoid that right now to help this go on. But then what it would say is after the 31st, we recognize that outside downtown is much different. It's going to revert back to the normal R P U D ordinance, but then we're going to have a specific downtown R P U D ordinance with these unique lots.
Do you feel like, Marcus and John, do you feel like this is doable? The planning commission, it sounded like it was.
Yeah, my question, actually, if you wouldn't mind, I just want to ask Laura if she sees any conflicts from your perspective in doing something like that, where we put in place a zoning amendment that sunsets while then at the same time essentially developing, you know, a definition for two M P U D categories, one that would be, you know, sort of for out in the boonies, you know, like Cadillac Junction type area versus, you know, in the, in town.
Downtown core.
Yeah, in downtown core.
Yeah, I'm not sure about a conflict. Procedurally, despite meeting a council member, I think a shipper's point, I think you could, recognizing we're just introducing it tonight, right? You're not approving it, but you could approve this and then separately, you know, adopt a resolution or pass a motion requesting that the planning commission consider another ordinance, another amendment that is going to proceed on its own path. My point of that is you do not have to have that direction in this ordinance in order to do it. In terms of whether there's a conflict, as long as they can both be carried out simultaneously, I don't think there's, you know, there's no legal issue with that. I guess it's the policy consideration of how you want it to play out is a little bit of a different question.
So, if I can just repeat what I think I'm hearing you say, you don't, from your perspective, have concern about putting in place the setting of a public hearing that would include the sunsetting. In this instance, based on conversation, it would be, you know, end of the calendar year, while at the same time, we would be working a parallel track to essentially reimagine this part of the code that would include classifications for both the downtown core as well as areas outside of that.
Yeah, I don't think that's problematic. And if your question is, and I'll make sure I understand, is there a problem with adding that sunset provision to this at this stage? I don't think that's a problem. I don't think you're substantially changing the ordinance in a way that is a completely different ordinance. So if you wanted to add that language in, of course, because council is not bound by what the planning commission recommended, as we know from having two versions here. So I would be comfortable with a sunset clause being added to this if that's what council wants to do.
What would be the benefit of the sunset clause again?
Because right now, the R P U D is such a big area, and we have to make the amendment to give planning commission the ability to also consider size and density, and we know that long-term, we don't want that for the whole area. We want a separate downtown R P U D ordinance. And it gives certainty, the people who have developed outside in the area still have certainty they had before. And what I could do is I'll go ahead and I'll state a motion now for you guys to consider, and we'll see how the wording is.
If I can try to clarify also, make sure that we're on the same page. And I think what council members trying to suggest is that we have, we have, instead of having a one, sort of one stone, you know, killing two birds approach, we create two classifications. So we kind of go back, we approve this, extend the time a little bit, make sure that the pending project can get in, while at the same time establishing two classifications. So, you know, we will have future asks for downtown development-type projects that are going to need to go under the Michigan P U D program, and we will hopefully by that point have actually separate language specific for downtown-type projects. While at the same time, you might get somebody coming in looking to do a project, you know, on 200 acres over at the Cadillac Junction site.
Wouldn't that be great?
Just throwing that out there. Right. Which would be through an M P U D process that would likely be a lot different in terms of the structure of that classification than what you'd be looking at for micro lots, where you're only talking about an acre or two acres maybe, or even less. Is that fair enough?
Yeah, and I think the other bite-sized piece is, in downtown, where the R P U Ds, we think that it would be appropriate to be able to increase the density and consider different sized lots. Out in other areas that have more residential around them, et cetera, we're not allowing developers to increase the density in areas that it doesn't need to be increased, and it would follow the rules as before. If it helps, what I would do is make the motion.
Wait, wait.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I want to ask you something.
Yeah.
I have another comment as well.
Yes, and so, staff recommended to pass it without the sunset.
Correct.
Can you explain why?
Well, there's always some uncertainty, the timing of when these new ordinances will come in line. The other big aspect is a number of people are looking at land deals and purchases right now, and whenever a developer looks at a piece of property and there's any kind of uncertainty, they're not going to move forward with that project and that purchase until they know exactly what they're going to be up against in terms of the approval process. So that's my biggest downside to putting the time restriction in. So I'd still prefer not to have it, because I think it could potentially block another one or two projects from happening, potentially.
That are kind of...
Not guaranteed, but potentially.
Okay, but they are on the, like, on the horizon, like, there's interest being shown, and that by putting a timestamp on it, it could dissuade them from...
Yes, developers have called me and asked me what is, what is the timeline on this amendment.
But, why would it block them? I'm just trying to clarify. Why would it block them?
The uncertainty, the uncertainty of where we're going.
Isn't there more certainty, though, because we're moving the date from November 1 to December 31st? So that actually opens up that window.
If they can move that fast.
Well, but they only can move till November 1 right now before it reverts to the old statute. So we're actually making it more developer-friendly with that. And then, two, we don't change or shock the outlying areas that have been following the rules of zoning to this point where that density variation is not necessary.
I think if city council decides this evening to establish the public hearing with a timeframe in it, you know, you still will have that public hearing, and you can still change that timeframe as well. I mean, Councilmember King is suggesting, yeah, it's not in stone, is suggesting December 31st, maybe it needs to be, you know, February 31st. I don't know, just throwing, throwing something out there. But I think the other thing, perhaps, you know, and I'm just looking at compromise if there legitimately is one, you know, council can certainly be on the record tonight having, you know, telling us, telling staff to move forward in creating a secondary M P U D program specifically for our in-city, our downtown area, and other residential area properties, those that are not out, you know, in the industrial zone or elsewhere, you know, so...
I would just say, you know, I was a little bit leery about the date, but I truly believe that we as a city have to be committed with our whole heart to be addressing this housing situation that we have. And, you know, Cadillac is very fortunate. We have developers that are looking here. We have two, three, four, five developers that are looking at Cadillac. Some communities don't have any developers looking at them. So, you know, if we put this date in there, it's a date that can be moved, but there's also a date there for the new zoning to be put in place, and I think that that new zoning needs to be a priority and not wait until December 31st to get that in writing and get that in place. And we need to be committed to working on that new zoning so that December 31st date never becomes an issue.
Can, what do we think about, because I, you know, having sat in this seat for a while now, I know how long things sometimes take. Would it be reasonable to give it a 12-month sunset? Because this is just, that's, from changing it from November 1st to December 31st, it's only two more months. And we're in March, so it would go till next March. That gives it a full 12 months, or April, it would be April, in order for all of the wheels to turn to get all the, the new ordinance in and to keep other developers from holding off. You know, because what happens is, they don't hold off, they go someplace else. Okay, someone who has the gumption to build housing, they're coming here because we are making it amenable for them to build here, and we're asking them to come here, and we want to work with them. So when we put things in the way of that, and I'm not talking about us just begging to be used, you know, to be like, anybody come and make money off of us here in town. I'm looking at the crisis in housing that we have in our community and in other communities nearby, and that if a developer is looking at us and thinking, oh, they're not sure they're going to be able to accommodate this, they are not going to wait to see what we do in another, by November 1st. They're going to look around for someplace else to go, and we could lose those opportunities. So that's why I'm concerned about putting a, putting a sunset date on this. I think that, I trust that our staff would work on making the ordinance to have a uniform, you know, identified area for change in density for the downtown area, and I don't think we need to put something in the wording that could dissuade people from building housing here for us.
To answer your question, and you have a very good point, no, it doesn't. I picked December 31st only because it gave more time than November 1st. That was one. Two is, we do know that to do the downtown, it's just tweaking so that it's specific to downtown and how you look at size and density, if you're going to adjust it, if the planning commission's going to adjust it. So, I mean, if we said April 1, 2025, as a sunset, it doesn't bother me, but I also agree with Mayor Philkins that I want this to be a priority. I want, to your point, when people come here to say, hey, if there's a unique lot in downtown Cadillac, we've got the tool to help you do this.
So I'm hearing that we are all in agreement, that the date can stay, that it can be 12 months out, and we're focused on housing, and we're focused on getting that new zoning in.
Let me say...
I have an agreement, too.
Yeah, let me say just a couple of things, because I think the planning commission, there was some discussion in the planning commission that we haven't rehashed here that I think provided a lot of clarification. And I think when you talk about trusting the staff, you know, and trusting the council and the planning commission, I think they made the point that we do, we trust this council, we trust this staff, and we trust this planning commission, but we're not going to be around here forever. So I think that was, that was the part of the sunset. The other part, you know, about tweaking our zoning ordinance is, they asked good questions about, if you weren't going to do this temporary fix where you let us use our discretion, how would you go about fixing the whole thing? And I think the reason we're not doing that is because we're in the middle of a zoning update that's being checked by legal, that we're going to spend the summer reviewing, and they even made the point on the planning commission that this, this ordinance would sunset with the effect, with the new zoning taking effect, right? That was one of their finer points?
That was some of the discussion.
Yeah, so they asked if there was another way of doing it, whether it was through updating the variances or updating, and you even mentioned that if you were to go through the process, change density for downtown, that the next day, you know, if your density is whatever, 50 units for two acres, the next day, somebody's going to request 55 for two acres, and that we wanted to be flexible, and that in the new zoning, which is going to be reviewed this summer, that there are mechanisms for handling this. Now, when Steve talks about, you know, if, if the zoning is in legal right now, this, the permanent downtown district is, I'm assuming, going to be part of that? The R P U D, P U D rules, like, are those already written and being reviewed? And the stuff we're asking for by December 31st is already a part of the plan that is, you know, is up for review by the planning commission?
It's possible that the future solutions would happen either through an amended R P U D, or potentially even a more flexible standard district language for a downtown district. That's something we would look at more closely as we try to do final revisions to the ordinance, whether it would happen through the standard district language. The state likes us to see us doing as many things by right as we possibly can. That's part of the R R C program. So they want to have us reduce the amount of things that are going through special use permit. So we'll have to look one last time to see, does it make more sense to do it through an adjustment to the R P U D, or does it make it more sense? Can we get everybody to agree that there's a way to do it through permitted by right in the downtown district?
And this could, by the way, this could be adopted just into the new ordinance if it works well. And the one thing I'll always say, you know, the joke of the doorbell ringing and the person saying, hi, I'm in government and I'm here to help, right before disaster strikes. I respect sometimes what the state gives us guidance. I think in our zoning ordinance, one of the biggest things we're going to be looking at, what's the character of our community? How do we want our communities to look? We'll do what the state requires, but we may not be the same picture that the state wants because of the character of our community that we want to keep.
Well, you know, and I liken it to Harper Woods, I'm friends with the mayor there in Harper Woods, they don't have one acre to build out on. If they do any building, it's going to be up in Harper Woods. So, I think that this has been a really great discussion, and I also sit on the planning commission, so I was part of that discussion. And this is, it's a really important topic, especially as we move forward with the zoning. And so, so thank you. I think that was, was really good.
The only thing I wanted to add for council's conversation, and this really isn't, I don't think anything you need to further discuss, but, you know, other than downtown, you also have the west side of town, you know, the 115 corridor, you know, so, you know, and hypothetically here, you know, M P U D language that might be looked at to focus more on your downtown core may not necessarily be the same type of language that you would be looking at, you know, for your west end of town through the 115 corridor. And, you know, similarly, you know, there are still, there are far and few between, but there still are some developable, you know, areas within residential zones that, you know, would be ripe for, you know, new single-family homes or duplexes or townhomes or some combination thereof, which is another wrinkle.
Right, but not a 53-unit apartment building.
Right, exactly, right, exactly. So I'm just saying that it may not be a one-size-fits-all, so...
And I mean, I kind of view this, too. I know, I feel like with the same philosophy, we were asking to approve like that Pine Street House for a short-term rental. Like, we knew rules were being developed, we knew there'd be a future where we had discussion, but we decided that that wasn't a time, you know, to make an exception. We'd wait for the final rules. In this case, when we're talking about housing developments with the final rules, you know, you know, not being done till the fall or maybe even next year, I think that this is a little different, and this is the tool we need to get through the summer, which is also why I support the time limit and then reevaluate. I mean, I support the longer time limit or the shorter time limit, whatever. But I think this is the proper tool.
I think longer gets us there.
I'll take a crack at this.
Yeah, okay.
I'm going to make a motion to adopt the resolution to introduce ordinance amending the city zoning ordinance regarding variations in R P U D designs with a sunset date of April 1, 2025. And then as discussion separate from that basic motion, with the understanding that the city and the staff are going to be working on an ordinance for downtown R P U D.
Yes, and we need to set the public hearing for April 4.
Yes. And we need to set the public hearing for April 4.
Oh, yeah, thank you. And we will set the public hearing for April 1, 2024. Support.
Councilmember Alabas Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Felkins?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, guys. Okay, at this time, we'll open the floor for our second public comment this evening.
I'm Andy Van Alst. And when I heard that the short-term rental update was going to be on the agenda tonight, it makes the hair on my neck stand up. So I was happy to hear the discussion about how things have developed. And there's a handful of short-term rentals that you're looking at. Well, I'm sitting in the back here, I see that the Cass Street and the Pine Street are available. You can look them up right now, they're online. And so, you know, we codified the use or the area of short-term rentals according to the memo that restricted them to TS1, TS2, R1 and R2 areas. So when we, when we codified, I thought, well, what does that mean? It says to enact as an official rule or law. So I'm like, okay, so this is what we have agreed to, so we're not trying to change stuff. But when I see this on the agenda today, I'm still concerned because I, I see stuff that doesn't add up. It's like somebody's getting bamboozled or hoodwinked, and I'm not sure if it's us or the owners of the property. As I see a house on the corner of Ohio and Sunnyside that was a short-term rental and it's unoccupied. I'm like, well, that's weird. The house next to me was a short-term rental and it's unoccupied. And I'm like, oh, it's for sale, but it's not for sale. It was for rent, but it's not for rent. So I'm thinking, well, that's weird. Then there was one that they were going to do, the intention on Petrie Road was to turn it into a short-term rental. And it sits there unoccupied. Oh, it's trying to sell it. But I'm going, there seems to be something that's not adding up. And I was like, I'm just wondering if that is something that they know that I don't know, you know? Because we talked about rounding off the zoning over on Ohio and 115 to accommodate the Cadillac West corridor development. Well, when I show up there, it's like, no, 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 we don't talk about that here. And I thought, well, why don't you change it from, all of those are residential, none of them are commercial use. If you're going to change it, change it to all residential. And then, I know that the city has granted a spot zoning over on Sunnyside behind the gas station. So, so it concerns me on what's going on here. So anyways, I'm glad to see that at the, the short-term rental stuff, the discussion you guys are having, to try and figure out how to get these people out of here. But I have a lack of confidence and probably some trust issues because it was allowed to get this far along. So hopefully you guys can keep going in the direction that you seem to be going in. So thank you.
Hi, I'm Rick Torres. I live at 113 Otsego Place. And I'm listening to you talk about the short-term rental and how we're dealing with it, you know, reporting it to the attorney and stuff and what have you. And Marcus's suggestion on having a staff person go to the house to confirm that somebody is, you know, renting the place. I got news for you. If I was a person renting that place and a staff person showed up that didn't have a badge or didn't represent law enforcement, they're not looking at my, my Michigan ID. No way. No way. You need to find a way to allow your law enforcement to be dispatched to the location, get a name, confirm that they're renting, and give some teeth to the ordinance. You have to cite the owner. Go to your Planning Commission, have them make an amendment that they would propose to City Council to make an amendment to this ordinance to give it some teeth. So these people that own these homes that are continually doing this in areas where they should not be doing it will know that you mean business. But if you're going to report it, your attorney, and they're going to send a letter, and while they get it, they don't get it, we've heard from them, we haven't, it's just drawing it out. And what homeowner wouldn't think, well, I'm just going to keep doing it, nothing's happening. All they have to do is not answer it. So my recommendation would be to give the ordinance some teeth. You have to do it. If you don't do it, this is just going to continue on and on. Because everyone's just throwing their hands up and saying, eh, so what? Nothing's happening to me. I can get away with this. And so far, they have been. Food for thought.
Did I hear correctly, and there was no police report at 1307 last year?
So we typically don't do an exchange, a dialogue. You would ask us questions, then if there's something I can respond to during our...
Because there was a police, we did call the police last year, twice.
It was not about your property.
Okay. Because we come home from dinner, and they were parked in front of our place, like, four or five houses down. And my son-in-law went over to ask the neighbor, what's going on? And he gave my son-in-law city dispatch's phone number. So my son-in-law was asking the young man parked in front of our house to move his vehicle while he was on the phone with city dispatch. And she said, Mr. Cook, we got police officers on the way. Just let it go, let them go, let it go. And the funny thing of it is, we're at 1305, 1307 is the short-term rental, 1315, right next door to 1307, is the owner, co-owner of 1307. So they were parked in front of his house, our house, and the two neighbors' house. So he knows what's going on. He's just sitting there doing nothing, taking the money. That's it. He don't care. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no one else, we'll close public comment and move to the good of the order. Anyone should have anything?
I'll go. First of all, I want to thank everybody that came tonight. I got a bunch of calls before tonight's meeting. I've gotten some over the past few weeks as, as the rest of council is hearing. People have sent me information regarding continued violations, and I have taken those and making the manager aware, as my complaint as a councilperson, in relation to those. I hear the calls, I hear what you're saying. I don't want to pit neighbor against neighbor, and I don't think we should. And for that reason, I think what you also hear is, council is ready to designate some resources and budgeting in order to have what we need to have enforcement. And I personally agree with the, the comments, Mr. Torres, Ms. Helms. It doesn't mean anything if we don't enforce it. So in doing this, what I'm hearing that we all want to see to do is to structure some rules so that you know how it's going to be investigated if it comes up, that you don't have to guess what is or is not happening. I'm going to tell all of you, feel free to contact me, call me, send me emails if there are problems. I'm sure the rest of our council is open to that also. That's one. Two, thoughts on what the procedure should be. Mr. Torres, I, I respect what you say, and I agree that sometimes it may have, sorry, Adam, it may have to be the police department that goes, it doesn't have to be confrontative. It can just be, hey, I'm here because we need to know if you're a short-term renter. And you're not in trouble. You are not in trouble. We're getting the information in relation to the owner. But we need to have that process there. I think I'm safe to say, we as a council are committed to doing that, and I want your feedback, feedback and input. So as we go through this process, you're part of that because we want you to be satisfied with what the process is. The other calls I've gotten in the past three weeks, it was after a news article. People were worried that in our revamping the zoning, we're going to throw out the R1 designation and throw out the R2. People are starting to read the new ordinances. I have five people tell me they think our current one is much easier to read than our new one. And that's a concern. Because we said, one of our goals is to make sure that this is a document that people can read easily, digest, and know what the designations are. Those comments are not forgotten. I, for one, just as I said with Mr. Wallace, who's our community development director, while there may be some requirements the, the state likes to have us have, and we're required to have with the new ordinance, we'll have to respect those. Others, like the character of R1, I would rather see R1, and my position right now, for what I know, is don't touch R1. What, what R1 is, people know what R1 is, what R2 is, people know what R2 is. We don't need seven or eight designations under that. But I need public input and public feedback. So that we as a council are helping Mr. Wallace in giving him direction, so we don't waste resources in going a direction we don't want to go. So again, thank you all, and please continue to be involved.
Okay. Good.
I was just, just real quick, because I know it's late. I, I was just, as I was taking notes during comments, I was just looking at the core values and our guiding behaviors at the end of our agenda, at the end of our meeting. And I would just like to say how much I appreciate how well this board works and the, the really mindful, intelligent input that comes into decisions that we all need to make. I really appreciate that. And I really appreciate all the amazing work that staff does to help get us to this place. And so I just want to do a shout out for that. That's all.
Thank you. Okay, last call. Okay, we're going to need a motion tonight to go into a closed session, please. I will make a motion to adjourn to closed session to consult with the city attorney regarding trial or settlement strategy in connection with pending litigation in City of Cadillac versus Neil and Joe Aman, case number 23-0030948, for the reason that an open meeting would have detrimental financial effect on the litigating or settlement position of the city. I'd like to invite Adam Ojepka, Director of Public Safety, as well.
Support.
Councilmember Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Alabas?
Mayor Felkins?
Yes, motion carries.
This is yours?
No, this is mine.